Yeah. Show me.
Less is off.
Okay.
Start us over.
All right. We are reconvening for the work session.
Less is on.
Ten twenty-seven. All right, Dr. Marr.
Good morning. I am here to present the blueprint for Maryland's future. What we're going to be presenting is just an overview of the key areas that are part of the legislation that was passed last year and supplement this year, which I will go over in just a minute. And just to share that the purpose is a work session. So there are a number of questions we have. There are a number of questions you will have. And so as you ask questions, there's information that we think we think we know in the really long and involved pieces of legislation. But there also may be times where we just say, we're going to look into that because there's still a lot of information coming forth from that. So with that said, in the presentation is a link to a Google site that has information that we're gathering around the blueprint that we will also share publicly. We've shared it with our work groups that have come together. If I go to that link, it opens up a Google site that I'll just do a quick walkthrough just to share with you that you can go through and find information. So in addition to just an overview of the legislation, there's actually at the bottom, you'll see the five work groups that I will talk about in just a minute, the slides that I'm presenting today, as well as the original pieces of legislation from 2020 and 2021. And then there is a chart that was actually put together by another county that we're sharing resources in as implementation coordinators across the state. And you can see this is all, these are all the pieces and the timeline that are part of the law. So there's a lot that's involved. If I go back up to the top of this document here too, in this site, each of the five policy areas has a work group that we gathered, we had our first work session last Tuesday, is going to meet monthly with the subgroups meeting in between the monthly sessions. They are chaired by our staff. So the early childhood policy area is chaired by Dr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
And our career and college, excuse me, our career pathways group is chaired by Dr. Farrell. Our college and career pathway group is chaired by Mrs. Bachner. The resources to support all students is chaired by Mrs. Woodley.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodley.
And our accountability and accountability group is chaired by Dr. Jafford. So all of their, the chairs align with their work, obviously, within the system. But under each one of them, the resources that we have are linked for each group. As we gather information, they'll be linked in each of the areas as well. So now let me close this site back and go back to the slides.
Thank you, Dr. Bachner. Mrs. Bachner.
So.
For chairing a group.
This work actually began five years ago with the Kirwin, the Maryland Commission on Innovation and Excellence, the, what's called the Kirwin Commission, because Dr. Britt Kirwin chaired that group. It met for about four years. Its key purpose was to look at changes and recommendations related to our education funding formula. From that, they also moved to look at policy recommendations to enhancing our school systems across Maryland, because with great funding comes great accountability. So we, they looked at what other elements within our school systems across the state have to be improved. And so their recommendations then went forward to the legislature and the General Assembly passed the first one, the 237-page blueprint for education. And then, so that was passed by the General Assembly, vetoed by the governor, and then overridden in 2021. And then between 2020 and 2021, we had the great pandemic, which impacted our schools as well as our students. And so it also affected the timelines within the blueprint. So they then passed what's called, well, it's House Bill 1372, but it's Blueprint 2.0. So it's, it's an addition to, it has some elements that expand the scope of the blueprint to include elements such as COVID mitigation and closing achievement gaps that were exacerbated as a result of the pandemic. This was passed in 2021. So with these two pieces, it then is put into the education law, the education article. And so that turned into 169 pages of that education article. So I share that to say that there's, there's a lot of information to digest. And so in the slides that I'm presenting, it captures highlights, but not necessarily all the details. Okay?
So just to go back, so how many pages did this add to the educational article?
A hundred and sixty-nine. And so the education article is 1,811 pages, so it's roughly 10% of education law in Maryland by volume.
By volume. Thank you.
So with that, these, this legislation, the blueprint, is broken down into five policy areas. So early childhood, development and education, high quality and diverse teachers and leaders or career ladders, rigorous college and career pathways, funding resources to ensure all students are successful, and governance and accountability. And so again, those were the subgroups that our work groups are really looking into. And we initially met with our, with staff. Our work group had about 50 people on it. We will be expanding those work groups to include critical partners in our communities. So from our education partners, we've been liaising with county government as well, because there's a lot of work that crosses our paths there. And as I go through some of these areas, you're going to see where, where that partnership is really imperative. So again, the goals of the blueprint, to transform Maryland's early childhood, primary and secondary education to the levels of high performing systems around the world. And so when the Kirwin Commission met, they studied not just systems across the United States, but also systems across the world. And so what they, some of the pieces that are embedded actually are references to best practices that you may see in other parts of the nation or the world. The second key piece here, and it's a bigger chunk, it's one of the policy areas, but it's a, it's, it's a really big part of it, is that is the career ladder system for educators looking at expanding those professional pathways. And I will go into that. So we started with those five policy areas. I'm going to start with the fifth one first, because it really is, it governs a lot of the work of the other policy areas. So the first thing is, is that there's a requirement that every school system submit an implementation plan at the end of this school year, by June 15th of 2022. That plan has to detail how we're addressing and implementing each recommendation within the blueprint. So all those, the elements that are, I'm going to show you in just a minute, we have to talk about what our plan is moving forward. And some of those pieces are actually reporting now. We have reports that we've already turned in this year, reports that are due in the next two weeks, but the bigger plan is due by the end of the year. And some of the elements, we have to really start thinking about now, because they have budget implications, they have staffing implications moving forward.
So those, those plans that you, or the information you've already had to provide, who did you provide that to? Did it go to MSDE? Or did it go to the new Accountability Implementation Board?
So there are, some of the reports we've done, we've submitted to MSDE. The Accountability Implementation Board, which is referenced on this slide, was just appointed October 1st. So that seven-member panel is ultimately who will review all that is submitted. Some pieces that were submitted to MSDE, some reports actually are specifically reported to the legislature, and some are reported to the Accountability Implementation Board. So it really depends on the report.
Okay. Thank you.
But the plan, as I understand it right now, is that while it's due June 15th, that's when they're due to the AIB, but we are likely going to have to send them through MSDE prior to that. So June really may mean May. In addition to each recommendation of the blueprint, the plans also have to address how we're, how we're providing behavioral health services. And so as we referenced earlier in this meeting, obviously, that is something very important to our, our system. Second, how we're closing achievement gaps, and specifically how we're addressing achievement gaps that may have been exacerbated as a result of the pandemic these last 18 months. Third, avoiding disproportionate placement of at-risk students with novice teachers. So specifically looking at the assignment of students and the resources for our newest teachers. And then finally, determining how additional funds were used for teacher collaborative time. And I'm going to go into a little bit more of that as we go into that second area around career pathways. So in addition, the, the reason I'm here is, is we have to have a local implementation coordinator. So the work has to fall to one person to gather all these resources and work with, with staff across the system to get the plans together. There is a funding accountability piece tied to this, this, this legislation. And that basically boils down to if we, if we don't do the pieces that are in it, some funding can be withheld from the state. And the Accountability Implementation Board is the decision maker on that.
So maybe a dumb question, but I'll ask it anyway. Do we have any understanding, when they keep talking about that 25% of funding, the funding increase can be withheld for noncompliance? Do they mean in the year in which that funding has been granted and is depended on? Or are they indicating that if we don't comply in the 22, 23 school year, that then for the 23, 24 school year, 25% of that additional funding would then be withheld? Do we know?
That's a good, that's a good question.
I do not know. That is a great question.
Ms. McCourt, could you, could you provide any concrete?
I cannot.
No.
It's an excellent question and a question I have already on my list.
Because the, so we aren't paid all of the money by the state or the county upfront.
Right.
So as this was originally discussed, it was going to be a withholding of one of the payments to the LEAs, which would imply within the year itself.
Right.
So that they might hold hostage a school system by failing to provide a quarter of the blueprint funding in an operational year. So just fathom what that might look like if, if suddenly we didn't have a quarter of the money that we thought we were going to have relative to all of this stuff.
And, and those points were, were definitely raised as the legislation was being written and debated, certainly by May, but it is frightening. So anyway, thank you.
Do they have an outline, kind of like specific points that you need to address within that plan?
Yes. And that is, that's one of the things I'm going to go through this morning, is just hit the highlights. And it does have specifics, but that's part of what we have to submit in the implementation plan, is how we're addressing all of the elements in, in the blueprint plan. And the, there is, the funding is actually tied to each one of those strands. And so I, I would imagine that the, the, the funding tied to that strand could be what's affected if a piece is not implemented properly. Ms. McCourt, you might have more.
That's absolutely correct. So unlike your current budget, under the new plan, there are approximately 15 categories of specific program funding that we will have to identify in the FY '23 budget. So we'll have foundation funding, we'll have career ladder funding, concentration of property funding, which used to be under your restricted funds, it's now going to be incorporated in your unrestricted funds as a restricted category within your unrestricted funds.
Right.
It's quite convoluted, but we're going, we're working through it. I'm in touch with DLS, with Rachel Heiss at DLS, who was an integral part of the creation of this bill.
So each, each one of these, really, this funding is to be handled, it has to be accounted for as though they're restricted funds. It, that, that's, that really is, and how they'll have to be recorded, it is such an, you know, this is, this is one of those things that we're going to, that we're going to work out. That's why we were talking before, when people are making decisions about what they're going to do with money, understanding that money isn't just in a, in an unrestricted checking account, everything is accounted for, budgeted, approved, and then has to be expensed the way it was presented. Otherwise, you have to go back and write an amendment, and we will have expert review teams that come in to, the one thing that anybody can do is fiscally audit a system. And education is one of the most rigorously audited fields there is. We're, we're audited more than any, anybody else, which is ridiculous, because we have some of this, you know, it's, this, this will really be interesting, how this all plays out.
That's one way to put it.
Yep.
Well, I have a question. So in my meetings, it's my understanding that once the state Accountability and Implementation Board is seated, then they are going to come up with items that each school system or LEA should include in their accountability plan. Is that your understanding as well?
We're awaiting that guidance.
Okay.
We don't have a template right now for what the implementation plan needs to look like. What we do know is that it has to address the elements in the blueprint. So that's our first discussion. And our initial work group was really to just look at what's involved, ask the questions, and then we are awaiting a template to be provided that has specific elements to address and how we have to report it. And that's, as, even for some of the reports that we have, we have the information gathered, but you, it's in the way it's presented that we wait for.
Right. Because I mean, it's my understanding that they are not expecting any of those, any recommendations to come out, because I mean, I don't mean, the board's been named, but they haven't been, they haven't met yet, from what I understand, or they've met once. So they aren't going to come out with anything until February or March, and then we're going to turn around and have to submit by June.
That would be a very long time.
Right.
We're submitting data as we go.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So they, they'll have a lot to look at.
Right. Okay.
Ponder and consider. And, and as Dr. Marr referenced at the beginning, there's blueprint 1.0, there's blueprint 2.0. Don't think for one second that all the legislators aren't going to get back in and start pulling all over the place that there's blueprint 3.0.
Yes. They're already discussing it.
Right.
And some of the timelines, as I'll share later, that, of things that need to be implemented this year, I would bet that the elements here are going to stay, but I wouldn't be surprised if some timelines shifted.
Right.
And then finally, just to hit on the last bullet on this, this slide, is part of the work of the AIB is to work with expert review teams, which are teams that are comprised of educators and administrators across the state, who will visit every school in the state of Maryland by 2031. And they will, it will involve classroom observations, it will involve a review of data and resources and programs within the building. We are not slated to be visited this year, because they're visiting the lowest performing schools in the state first, of which we are not, we have no, no schools on that list.
And are those the teams that are regionally based?
As I understand it, but I, we don't have specific ones assigned to us at this point.
No, I understand that, but I mean, like, as I, during the, during the hearings, there was talk about having them regionally based, so you didn't have someone trying to look at Montgomery County in the same way that you looked at Kent County. So, okay.
And have those expert review teams been named? And do they fall under the Accountability and Implementation Board, or do they fall under MSDE?
That is a great question.
No one knows, Kathy.
Okay. Just checking.
We should have asked Senator Pinsky when we were in that Kirwin thing.
So there was, a, a long time ago, you would actually have to have your high school certified by.
Middle states.
The middle states. It was a gigantic, monstrous, lumbering thing where people and systems provided leave for other people to be on visiting, teams would set criteria, and that's indeed how you had your building accredited. It would appear that they're trying to create some simplified version of this in this. It's as though they took every good idea that ever was put forth and then just said, yeah, put that in. Yeah, put that in. I don't know what the expert review teams would look like, but if you're visiting schools over the next 10 years, imagine how much education has changed in the last 10 years. So I hope that we either get there really on the beginning, so we can define what is, you know, needed, or we get there at the end and I'm long retired.
Okay. So to summarize by this point, the legislature passed these two pieces of legislation. They have put all these deadlines and items in place. We have little to no guidance from the state, either from a practical standpoint or a monetary financial standpoint, but yet we are still going forward and plugging through the best we can to meet what they say in the legislation.
So right now, I, that's a good summary. There are, that's why the, the, the work groups as part of our blueprint committee is really just looking at what's involved and what kind of information we have to gather first, because we know that eventually that guidance is going to come, and it will give us more details. But we need to understand it as deeply as we can, so that we're ready for when that guidance does come.
So whatever happens, right, we are still plugging forward and we are still being proactive, and we'll be ready with whatever drops out of the sky. Okay.
We've said that we are, we are very much.
We've been talking to Dr. Marr and team.
We are very much, we don't wait until somebody does something to us.
Right.
We're not going to wait for other people to decide and then do it to us.
Trying to make sure that point is out there.
And before he leaves this slide, the good news is that we've identified Dr. Marr as the local implementation coordinator, so we took away all his other responsibilities. He has no other title. He is, oh, wait.
Yes, he has.
It's, it's added on. And on the other side, the county commissioners have a counterpart, and that is Ms. Catherine, Catherine Prattson.
Yes.
Who's the director of HR. And that's, it's other, it's another other duty aside, but it, this is, eventually, this has to become.
All-consuming.
A, a one person's all-consuming responsibility.
Yes. And I'm just to, and we, I've had several conversations with Ms. Prattson as well, and she's part of this, this group to come together and look at what we need to do. And, and so that partnership has been established, and we're, we're, we're actually, she and I were exchanging some emails to meet next week as well, so that we can continue our, our conversation. In addition, and I would be remiss if I didn't also comment on my colleagues across the state and regionally, I'm fortunate in that I'm part of a group with our, our other local implementation coordinators that meets regularly across the state, but also in Southern Maryland, the implementation coordinator in Calvert. And Charles and I meet every week to try to just peel this onion and try to find out every little bit that is, is understood. And so I just wanted to say thank you to, to those colleagues as well. And then of course, this week, we continue with the M&amp;S conference, which is going to spend a lot, spend a lot of time on that as well. Okay. So I'm going to move, again, this was area five, and we haven't hit to the other policy areas, so I'm going to, I'm going to drive into those real quick. And the first one, and you saw Dr. Hall and her team earlier today, and you know the great work that we continue to do in early childhood. I think we are in a really good shape, moving forward with the intent of the early childhood policy area in the blueprint. And that is to increase full day slots and opportunities for pre-K for students across our area. And you've had Dr. Hall present before about just how much work has been done to expand our opportunities for pre-K, particularly working with slots for our tier one students and students who, who could really benefit from the program. What the blueprint does is it also expands with a goal of bringing in our non-public providers into a partnership with us, so that they too can expand pre-K slots in the, in the non-public or private provider area. And so part of the work will be establishing formal partnerships. It may include addressing transportation needs. It may include working with them as they need to meet specific evidence-based structural elements for nationally recognized pre-K programs, and that their staff meet certain qualifications as well. The, the law also puts a focus on expanding duty centers, family support centers, and infant toddler programs, and requires the assessment of KRA universally by next school year as well. So some of these areas are going to seem very familiar, because we have great programs that are established. So this takes the next step, but I think we're, we have a really strong foundation to move forward in this area.
Now, the one, the one thing that May is concerned about, and the association of school boards, are the last two bullets, the licensing, the ME with the school system, and then the meet qualifications, because it's not clear on whether that will be our burden, or whether that will be the burden of MSDE. So, and that's, I, I know they, they're trying to schedule a meeting with the Accountability Group or whoever those people are, to hammer that out, because that is, we don't have the, I mean, and even now, you can even go with transportation, right? I mean, not, not against full day pre-K or private providers or anything like that, but just the burden on the LEAs to do those, even those three things, is almost like opening another school.
And the space implications too.
Exactly.
Like, is there infrastructure in place to support the education?
I, I got it on my radar, Dr. Hall. I have it.
But in the immediate, this one would be fairly simple, is that all pre-K, half-day, full-day pre-K students then become part of your FTE count, so they are then eligible for state and local funding, and it is a mandate and a requirement. Now, keeping in mind, we have, how many kids in pre-K?
We have a thousand slots.
A thousand slots.
We haven't, we're not there right now because of the pandemic. We're rounding it up.
So if we filled a thousand slots and we had them there all day, every day, the state would be kicking in another $7.5 million, and the county would be kicking in another $7.5 million. Just like, like, the, the weight of this one, this is a, this one, you can figure this one out.
Right.
Because we're already doing all this work, it's just do it more and have the state and the county share the responsibility for paying for it.
Right. And I, I think just the discussion during, and in the, in the writing of Kirwin, a lot of the people unfortunately that did it were in the metropolitan counties, right? Where you actually have a pre-K school building that is licensed and run by a company or whatever, and it's not what we have down here, which are a lot of LLCs, you know, that are in churches or, you know, things like that, so.
And if I recall correctly, there's a minimum threshold early on in the legislation that 30% of the slots have to be with private providers. And those of us in rural counties just kept hammering on.
Allegheny County?
We.
Allegheny County provider, is a single source provider for all that services?
Right. So, Dr. Hall, do you have any sense of how many slots would currently be available, given the requirements that private providers have, their teachers and assistants have to meet certain certification requirements?
Okay. So the answer to the first question is, we will not have, and I've talked to MSDE about it, we will not have the 30% of private preschooler, private preschools, private providers that meet the criteria. Not right now. We are not going to be alone in that.
Right.
And the process for them to meet the criteria, as it's being developed, is to go through the Excel process. That's very detail-oriented, very time-intensive. Certainly, if we put people in, we could help them go through that, but there's a lot of childcare credentialing pieces with it. So we're going to end up getting a waiver, and MSDE, early childhood leads pretty much told me that. And then the second part of it is the capacity. We're going to have to be, from a public school's lens, we're going to have to be really thoughtful about how we do this in a way that we can increase the opportunities, but be mindful of where we are. But I, I would say maybe we'll have two or three private preschoolers that are going to meet it right now, certainly not 30%.
Okay. Great. That's what I was interested in hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to move to the second policy area, which is teachers and leaders, and this is also where we learn about our career pathways that are coming. So the first part of it looks at the initial part of the teacher pipeline, that is teacher preparation programs. And it expands the requirements for teacher prep programs to include a full-year internship. Many programs across the state and the nation have it in their undergraduate program, and it's typically, they have some field experiences in the fall of their senior year and a student-teacher internship in the second part of the year. In St. Mary's College. In St. Mary's College, who is one of our rich partners here, they have a full-year internship, and it's part of a master's of arts in teaching, so it's a fifth-year program. So, for a program like that, they're in really, I think they're in pretty good shape for meeting this requirement. For other teacher ed programs, I think that it's going to be some work that has to be done, and for the students who go in those programs, that would mean that they have to get all their other coursework done by the end of their third year, so that they could have time in the fourth year. So this could have implications for that pipeline that comes through. In addition, there's increased standards for licensure to include EDTPA and P-PAT, which are two portfolio-based assessments for teacher ed programs, for a teacher to become certified, not, no longer just a simple, I say simple, but it's a test that you take, but also this gathering of reflections and resources for part of that. And so, and then additionally, there are other elements that talk about a minimum GPA to enter a teacher ed program as well. So that's before you apply and become a teacher. Once you do become a teacher in the public schools, there is a new career ladder system that will be implemented by July 1st, 2024. So this is one of those pieces that we have some work to do over the next two years, so that it's in place for any new hires who are hired for the '24, '25 school year. In addition, and I'm going to go in, the next slide is going to walk you through what the career ladders look like, or what we believe they're to look like on an overall scale. In addition, part of the blueprint includes increased compensation for staff. So with the increased requirements and professional requirements there, there's also compensation. Now, that includes a 10% increase in salary across the board over a five-year span that was baseline in 2019. Now, we have a four-year agreement that starts moving us along that path, so we're in better shape than others. In addition, when this is implemented, I think 2025 is the required start time for the $60,000 minimum salary starting for teachers. In addition, for teachers who are certified through the national boards, and every year we recognize those teachers who are national board certification, who earn that or renew their certification, and we have over 30 in our system, they would receive effective July 1 of this coming year, July 1, 2022, an additional $10,000 on top of their salary. Currently, our stipend is $3,000, this moves it up to 10, and if they're in what's called a low-performing school, there's an additional $7,000 on top of that. So, up to $17,000 for somebody who has national board working at a low-performing school. What is a low-performing school, you ask? We don't know. There are, the requirement is that there is a definition developed that would be applied, and because then that determines what schools meet that criteria. There are three different places in the legislation that describe low-performing schools, and they're described differently each time. So, putting those elements together, and we would love some guidance from the state on this, to have some consistency of what that looks like across the state, but we do not have that answer yet. But it does affect salary to start with, and other elements as well.
And is that additional $17,000 per teacher that that would affect, is that state money that's coming?
Some of the funding is, and this is where Ms. McCourt comes in.
No.
A component of the funding is, but not all. And every day, Dr. Mar and I joke that every day we learn just one more thing about the blueprint, and yesterday afternoon, we had a CFO meeting and found out, not only is there a national board amount of $10,000, but then there are maintenance increments. So when you go and get a renewal, there's a first-year maintenance amount of $8,000. When you go and get your second renewal, there's another $7,000, and when you go and get your third renewal, there's another $6,000, and these renewals are at every five years.
So, but the bone, or-
The state is not providing this money.
Right, but is it annually, or?
Yes, it's their annual, it's added to their annual salary.
So if I am a board-certified teacher and I'm making $90,000 and I get-
Make 107.
I make 107.
If you're at a low-performing school.
Every year.
That's correct.
And-
Oh, wait, I, wait, I have another question. So, do then we have to negotiate that? Do we have to put that in the agreement?
Well, so we're going to Ocean City for three days.
And that's, oh, you're going to find that answer out for us.
Because the, a hard date in there is July 1, 2022. School systems have to provide nationally-board certified teachers $10,000. So, we're going to discuss how we enact that, whether we have to formally open and negotiate compensation, because you can't open little. But yeah, and the thing is, this, the starting $60,000 a year, what we kept on asking was, I need you to go to all the school systems and identify how much money that's going to cost, based on what their starting salary is here to get to there, what is that actual cost, and then that should be the cost that's then provided and that's going to be sent out and recognized, there's going to be flexibility every single year, because you're doing basically a snapshot, and they never did. And the amount of money that that's going to cost for us, our starting salary is $47.5 plus another $2,500 that we put in that we're using out of the blueprint money, that's a lot of money.
The, so the increased rigor of the teacher prep programs.
Yes.
Obviously, we are an import state. Maryland does not produce enough teachers to staff all of our positions across the state. What will this mean for individuals who want to come here from other states?
Reciprocity.
That is a good question, and that is one that the, this work group has asked, because it does impact, obviously, and as Dr. Smith referenced earlier, there are teachers who have conditional certifications, so what does that look like for this? If all teachers have to enter on this career ladder, and maybe this is a good time that I jump to the next slide, because-
Hit it.
And this one, I'm going to start with it with some simple boxes, and then it's going to get really messy in just a minute, okay? So, right now, if you look at levels one and level two, this is very familiar for what we currently have as teacher pathways. That is, they come in as a certified teacher, or if not, maybe there's a one sub-A, that is your conditional features, but they work towards certification for level one. Then, they start pursuing a master's degree, additional credits, or national board certification, and as they do that, we have different lanes in our salary that recognize that, and there's different certification types. So they start a standard professional, they work towards an advanced professional when they earn those credits or those degrees. So that's something we're familiar with. What this does is it says, well, we also have additional levels that are added for this career ladder, and so they look at, if you have national board, you are a level three teacher, and then if you become a teacher leader who has national board certification, or a distinguished teacher, or a professor distinguished teacher, I don't know what those mean either yet. I mean, there's a lot of, like, what does that look like in practice?
You saw me roll my eyes.
Right, or your level three takes you into, and you split into the administrator track, which is where we see assistant principals or administrators, and then it breaks administrators into a regular licensed principal or a distinguished principal where you need national board certification. I think by 2029 or '39, they have to have national board certification to be in that level for administrative track. And then to move along, each level of these, you have requirements to have effective performance, so of teacher evaluation, their readiness, and availability of positions, so there, it suggests that there would be a number of slots that are available for each of these positions.
And in some ways, what this, so the state of Maryland has a provisional, a standard, and an advanced professional certificate. They also have a designation of AMS 1, AMS 2, and then AMS 3, and they had a state superintendent certification process. This doesn't incorporate respect or, it's silent on any of that. It's as though higher ed doesn't exist anymore, and all there is, is the initial certificated teacher and national board certification. That is the only thing that drives compensation on this model. You can go to college forever, you can get your master's degree, we don't care, get your doctorate, we don't care, pursue a double whatever, we don't care. The only thing that matters is being a nationally-board certified teacher.
It also is silent on other positions, so it doesn't address school psychologists, or speech-language pathologists, or counselors, or instructional resource teachers. There are a number of elements that are not described here. All right, now, if you're comfortable with these boxes here, let me add a little bit of other mess to the slide. And so, what it also describes is the amount of teaching time that is restricted for each of these levels. So currently, we have approximately an 80/20 split. If you include the time a teacher reports for the duty day to the time that they end the duty day, you include their class periods that they teach, and then lunch, and their planning time, it's roughly an 80/20 split. What this does is it says that teachers will teach an average of 60% of the time with classroom instruction, and then 40% doing other student supports and improvement, and it describes that as, it could be small group tutoring sessions, it could be individualized work, or it could be professional development and planning. So this has implications for staffing a building, and the space within a building that's available if the students are broken into smaller groups and smaller cohorts for that. So that covers levels one, two, and three, but when they get to level four, that amount of dedicated teaching time is reduced, so that moving started from a 50/50 split to a 40/60, and then to a 20/80 split for your professor distinguished teacher, which they described would be about 1% of the teaching population. It also adds to it requirements that assistant principals and principals teach part of the day as well. So then you can imagine, then there are other implications, because they too are teaching, or they're doing a full-time job as an administrator with those responsibilities, and if they then have 20% of the time assigned to teaching, it would impact the work and the staffing that would be required to manage those buildings.
I have a question. So, on the teacher leader, right, let's ignore the fact that it's nationally-board certified for a moment. What is that counterpart that we have right now?
I would imagine it's similar to what we have as resource teachers and other chair-type positions, but it's not, it doesn't describe it in that same way in the blueprint, so we would have to peel that a little bit.
So if I, so if I'm chair of the math department-
Yes.
Right, at a high school, under Kerwin, I am still, where am I? I'm nowhere on here, right?
For that additional role, I would imagine what it's suggesting, and I, this is just what I think, I think I know, I would imagine it's putting it in a level four, but to be in that space, you have to have national board certification, so.
That's my point, so I'm not nationally-board certified, but I've been head of the chair of the math department at Leonardtown for 15 years, so now you're telling me that, what am I? I mean, I'm not even, I don't even know.
So this was, this was written by people-
Oh, I know.
Who did not know how public schools work, don't understand how master schedules operate, how classrooms are designed, what a teacher's day really looks like. It, this is, you know, that, when we started talking about all the different roles that people have, it, so, the part that always, that bothered me most of this is, so the best teachers teach the least amount of kids.
Right.
So the better you get it, you, basically, you earn your way-
And then you become a teacher.
-out of teaching kids. And I don't know that that's going to be attractive to a lot of our fantastic educators. I don't know that they want to only teach one class a day.
And let me also add too, because Ms. Bailey, you asked for a current teacher. So, while we're required to have the career ladder in place for all new hires, July 1st, 2024, what it says is that we have to incentivize for teachers to opt into the career ladder who are existing staff. So, we don't know what that looks like yet either, but it, there could be for a while two tracks of teachers, those on the career ladder and those who are existing staff.
Grandfathered in.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, let's move on to another part of this career ladder policy element, and that is about teacher evaluation. Now, we have a solid teacher evaluation system that we've had for about 20 years, that has worked very effectively and efficiently for us and is an outgrowth of wonderful learning over the years. It is also aligned with COMAR, and that is, it currently matches Danielson. The first four professional practice domains align with Danielson's framework for teaching, and the fifth domain is around student performance. That is a requirement of the Ed Reform Act a decade ago, and is in COMAR, but this then says we have to align our teacher evaluation with the national board professional teaching standards, and I've listed the five propositions there by 2024 as well. So, there could be a shift then in evaluation of our staff. It also requires the implementation of a peer review and assistance program that, we have something similar in place for our new and novice teachers, but this would apply to all. It also requires a new model of professional development. I don't know what that looks like, but it'll be developed by MSD that then we have to implement for all employees as well. And then, as a nod to the work that was presented earlier too, there's an evaluation of hiring practices relative to diversity, and as you heard, there's still work to be done, but that is part of the path we are on as well. But we'll report annually those strategies and those numbers by every year on July 1st, beginning 2022. And then finally, it adds that we need to work to reduce the student-teacher ratio reduction. So, if you're doing the math in the background, the, we already talked about the implications that could have for staffing as well that would be needed, but now a part of it too is reducing that ratio within the classroom as well. So, again, laudable intentions, the implications could be more staggering.
Well, Dr. Kerwin repeatedly said during the discussion of developing this legislation, the way we were going to all be able to afford to pay our teachers so much more was by having such successful teachers that they could then have larger class sizes. So we would therefore need fewer teachers, and the funding to support those teachers could then be-
And that was the same with special ed. You're going to do such a great job, you won't need special ed anymore.
Well, I'm going to need bigger class sizes, because once I've become a teacher, right, I mean, I mean, I'm only teaching 60% of the time, right? So who's going to cover my class for the remaining 40%? And then if I keep advancing, I'm teaching less and less, so I'm going to, I'm going to need more, it's, you know, I mean, we're going to have to hire a lot of permanent substitutes.
Don't worry, there's also requirements for our substitutes as well, but I didn't add those to the slide, so. But I want to also, just before I leave this area too, again, this is, this particular policy area, there are a lot of questions that we have and a lot of work to be done, and I also want to, so this group is led by Dr. Farrell, but there are a number of people, teachers, administrators, part of our work group, we invited our last four years' worth of teachers of the year, and we have representatives from the associations as well. So, we're trying to get all minds on and all part of the discussion, so. All right, let's move to area three, instruction, college career readiness, and this is led by Mrs. Bachner, and, and so, again, this is an area I think that we are in pretty good shape, because we have so many pieces in place. So the first thing it talks about is tracking student performance. Do we have a way-
Check mark.
-in which we can look at our ninth graders and make sure they're on track so they can graduate on time, and if, we have that system in place, so we're in really good shape with this first bullet. The second one is the assessment of college and career readiness. Now, we've had assessments and state assessments for a number of years that are part of graduation, and we've had recently, the last round of requirements that went with CCR, had the assessment by 11th grade, and if you don't meet it by 11th grade, you need remediation by 12th grade so you can graduate. This pushes it down to 10th grade, and then says if you don't meet it by 10th grade, you then have to have a specified curriculum and program of study in collaboration with local community college. Now, we have a really great partnership for our dual enrollment programs with the College of Southern Maryland, and so essentially, it creates these pathways for our students. That is, if they're not college career-ready, they go into a specialized program of study, so whatever they need, specialized courses. Then if they do meet it, then they go into a college prep, so AP classes, we have those in place, early college or dual enrollment, we have those in place. In fact, we've presented models in previous years about how we want to expand those programs. Or, a CTE pathway that builds in partnerships with local businesses to make sure students are met. So we're, we're in really good shape with this. The question is, what is CCR? When is that definition coming? Because those have to be done through our program of studies, we have to define and write course- and write courses. We have to make sure that we have all the pieces in place, and staffing in place, and trained in order to have those courses in place by next year. And we don't know what that assessment or that measure looks like at this point. Finally, in here, it talks about ensuring that we have career counseling for our students. Well, we have really wonderful school counselors, and Navions, and all these other programs and support programs for our students. In fact, one of the great things that our students talked about with the state superintendent last week was just that, as they're on a path, they're looking at developing their own personal pathway. There are resources within the building and in career centers so that they can get those resources. So again, work to be done here, and a lot of unanswered questions, but I think we have a lot of things
The goal here is that by the time your child's 15, you will have them absolutely, irrevocably placed in a track. So we're going back to a tracking system that is going to be based upon, I'm assuming, the assessments that we haven't seen yet. When we talk about educational equity, and we talk about breaking down barriers and hindrances, and when we start talking about the fact that you have to pass a test to be able to get to an educational experience, that is absolutely the opposite of what we have been working on for the last 20 years. We don't, we believe that everybody can choose a pathway, but we don't say, oh, this isn't, you can't have this pathway. And at 15, after 30 years of working with kids, 15-year-old, there's no way to tell at 15 whether you shouldn't be, you know, you have to do this or this, but that's all you have. And this, we have all, we are doing all of this. We tried, we, Dr. Kerwin, we brought him down here, we talked about the comprehensive high school, we walked him through the technical center, we walked through all the programs, and he said, yeah, that's exactly what we want. And I said, well, then it's done. Just give us more money. I don't, you shouldn't be, kids shouldn't be college or career ready when they're 15. They should be college and career ready when they graduate, be it at 17, 18, 19, 20, or 21.
I have a question, just thinking down the future. So if we start by their direction, taking paths and saying, well, no, you can't do this, because you don't fit into this criteria. So now we have made it inequitable
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For these students.
Pulling everything together. Look at you.
I know. But then do you see lawsuits happening?
Oh, yeah.
And then stopping this nonsense?
Well, I see, so for like, for public, so on one end, they're going to measure whether or not you have a diverse professional teaching staff, right? But while they're doing that, they're also going to the colleges and saying, to get into an educational pathway, you have to meet a certain level on a standardized test. And if you don't meet the level on a standardized test, you can't enter into the program. And oh, by the way, if you get into the program, the last year of that program isn't going to be just this one semester where if you have to work, or you, you know, you have a schedule, we're not going to, it's going to be an entire year. So like, when I went through a million years ago, and I had to do my student teaching, I could no longer do the, do the, I was doing classes and working. I can't work anymore, because I had to go into and be at the school all day, and do my lesson planning and all that stuff. So I was unemployed for six months, and at the end of it, this is full disclosure, I was homeless, because I couldn't pay my rent, and I couldn't make all these things. And I went home at Christmas, and I said, ta-da, I finished my student teaching, but I'm homeless. And this is going to exacerbate it for an entire year. It's a, it's a great idea, it's a good idea, but it needs, it needs the 3.0, 4.0, 5.0 version. And the one thing that we talked about with the state superintendent who's down here, is our TAM program, where we go to kids, and we're trying to target them in middle school to get them inspired about education, show them a pathway all the way through, show them that they can build their talents, and ultimately, it's teachers who teach teachers best. What we're seeing in institutes of higher education, the people who are teaching the methods courses, and the actual practicums, these aren't necessarily people who have been in a public school perhaps in their life. Now, that's not true for St. Mary's College. I have to say, St. Mary's College, they've got, there are teachers, of course, they're wonderful. They go there, and they're actually working with kids. But this, we are building a system that will absolutely disadvantage the people who have been disadvantaged historically in the United States. Period. So I'm going to get a lot more passionate about it, and speak a lot more often about it, and, you know, suffer the consequences. But this is, again, how you could say, like, college and career ready, we argued against it being at the end of the 11th grade year. We said, look, if you want to do college and career ready, that's great, figure your tests out, and at the end of the, when they finish high school, they can take a test, and if they're not college, you know, whatever, we'll get all the data and go through that. But please don't, please don't interfere with a child's educational path. Because what they did at the end of the 11th grade year was you had to completely change their schedule, and jam them in these other courses, so they lost an opportunity for something that could be very engaging, perhaps something over at the technical center, because they didn't hit a math measure. You know, I think math is very important, but I also don't think that it's necessarily, then at that point, they were, it was Algebra I, but they were looking toward Algebra II. And the whole world doesn't need to be able to do Algebra II. It doesn't. It doesn't. So, you know, this, we're in good shape, we have all the things in place. We aren't, I'm going to tell you upfront, it will be my recommendation, and the program of studies will come before you, and you'll get to vote on it, but we're not necessarily changing anything that we're doing, nor are we going to limit any opportunity for kids that want to stretch up. We've been all about stretching up. There is no, if you want to take an AP course, you can take an AP course. And then it's our job to scaffold structure and support behind them with an AP, an AP, what's the course called? Where you're helping?
AP Seminar?
AP Seminar. Beneath it, to help them, not AP Seminar.
No.
Just AP Work Studies.
AP Work Study, yeah.
And you know, and I'll say from, from personal family experience, the importance of encouraging kids, making it, making it possible for kids who don't fit the mold to get into those AP classes and to be successful is incredible, and made college work, because my child had already been exposed to the concepts, and so had, was, was taking in information in college that was made easier by having had that AP class. And I, and I will defend to my death the right of every single kid who wants to be in an AP class to get there. And I don't care what the state says.
So you certainly touched on the unintended consequences that come with well-intended policies. So, and I think that's going to be the work that we are doing over the next couple of years, is trying to make sure that we don't lose those real strong programs. I'll go back to funding and accountability here, because the fourth one is about making sure that resources are in place for all students. But again, every one of them ties to a set of requirements. So first, the state funding increases, we talked about as well as formula changes for funding at the local level, with a focus on providing resources for students. And some of the pieces that were built into Blueprint 2.0 expand those resources as a way of responding to and mitigating the challenges from the pandemic. So first, new supports for schools with focus on high concentrations of students living in poverty, before and after-school and summer programs, and we've presented what we've been doing in the past here, particularly with our ESER programs. Student success needed for health and social services, and like I said, it's very appropriate that we began our meeting with our student services staff. And then supports for English language learners and special education students. So with this, there is funding that is tied to community schools and wraparound services as well. And then I will add on to it, all of the other miscellaneous elements that don't fit into a policy area, but were added in, particularly in Blueprint 2.0. And that is first saying, the MSD needs to provide consistent leadership training across the state, that we implement school-based health centers. And Ms. Allen, you talked about the work that is being done both at the Spring Ridge and Margaret Brent Center, so I think that we have some really good elements in place for that. Expanding behavioral health services, and much-needed support there. Family support centers, data verification, so that there is a back-and-forth, two-way process between us providing information to the state, and the state providing us information to make sure that it's the right information. That there are virtual education options, and at our last meeting, Dr. Jaffre shared information about the virtual academy with Mrs. Giles, so we have a lot of there. And then having an ELL work group, particularly as you look across the state, the resources that are provided. And then finally, elements around COVID mitigation, particularly addressing learning loss, and making sure students have supports there. And we, we've shared with you, we had a really vibrant summer program. We also have after-school programs that are kicking off as well for that. And so this timeline here really goes back and just says, here's what we have over the next couple of years that's right in front of us. So first, identifying a local implementation coordinator. Second, a ninth-grade tracking system. These are things that we've already checked off, checked the box. Developing, implementing a program of study for students who don't meet CCR, and we just spent some time talking about that. Providing reports, and we've already had some of these that have been presented and shared up the state, and some of them are due in the next couple of weeks. The local implementation plan, and then providing learning loss programs, which we've addressed through our ESER programs as well. And I don't want to go into the detail of the next couple of years, because as we said, some of those timelines could shift for sure. So with that, I know this was a lot, and there are a lot of unanswered questions. As Ms. McCourt just said, we learn something new every day, and we continue to adapt and adjust along the way. But we will, we will certainly keep you informed, involved in the discussion throughout the process. And I'll pause for any other questions or comments.
I don't have anything. Thank you for heading this up and unpacking it, and all the work that's to come. I mean, you know, we're trying to get clarification on things. I can tell you that this county's not alone. I mean, some of the challenges at the other counties are huge mountains for them to, you know, to try and climb to implement this. So, and I think it's, I think a lot of it is going to be a great burden on the smaller, the middle to smaller school systems, because everyone thinks that, you know, we just have people sitting around in an office that, you know, maybe work four hours a day. And clearly, that's not the case. But in reading some of the requirements, I think that that's what they think people do.
So the Kerwin, the, sorry, the Blueprint, whatever the original was called, right, the gathering, they were to get together to review the formula funding for individual school systems, because it was inequitable. Because the majority of state-level resources were going to urban centers, and not necessarily going out to mid- and small-level school systems. And either way, we needed to go and take a look at what, what is equitable funding for schools?
Plus, the Thornton legislation required that it be reviewed, and that
After 10 years.
After 10 years, and it was not.
No. The good news is, we've, we now understand the formula, right, Ms. McCourt, and I know exactly how much money we're getting next year.
We are working with DLS at this time to confirm how much money we're getting next year.
Yeah, yeah. That, you know, a good, you know, good fiscal management says that you, you only plan for what you can pay for, and you only move forward with things that are sustainable. You don't do something for one group of children that you're not going to be able to do for the next, and the next, and the next. And here we are, in the midst of all of this, and it's November, and I don't really have any clear understanding of how much funding St. Mary's County Public School is going to get from the state, moving forward to implement, to carry on the work that we're already doing, much less implement brand-new stuff. We still have, we still have, as law, maintenance of effort, which says, I don't have to give you one penny more than I gave you last year, and we have inflation, and cost escalation, and all of that. And this isn't, it's not addressed anywhere in there, that there's, that there's ever going to be, there's no tethering to the CPI, or that there's going to be an increase every single year. We're still in maintenance of effort. You know, if I was to, if I was to evaluate somebody based on their charge, I would walk away from this saying, you drifted off course.
We said that over and over and over, and it was said by the individuals on the commission who did have experience in schools, extensive experience in schools, and no one wanted to hear it.
Right. I mean, all we, what they should have done was, they should have said, we're going to look at the way we calculate funding for schools, and you're going to, you're going to consistently get this amount, this amount, this amount, this amount, per pupil over the next 10 years. That's going to happen. And while that's happening, here are the things that we expect. We expect to see a salary increase, we expect to see some performance indicators, that's it. You know, instead, what we're left with is, you know, 15 different non-restricted but restricted accounts, because I, we can't guarantee that we're going to get that back every single year. And a micromanaging of, there's, of everything. And when this accountability board sits, what, what are they going to, what are these seven people who, right, seven, nine were proposed, they selected seven. Seven people have control over billions of dollars of funding, and they're not Maryland State Department of Education, nor is it their full-time job. It's as though they're going to gather off hours to figure out how to impact 900,000 students.
Nor do they have any practical experience in the field.
And it was not a diverse group.
Yep.
All right, I'm done griping for today.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Mar.
Thank you.
With that, we're done.